Good evening. Welcome to the February 15 regularly scheduled Barstown Community School District's School Board meeting. I am Sean Heitman. B. Niblock is away for the evening, as are a couple of other board members. So I'll introduce the folks here at the table with me. To my right, Nico Agüero. To my left, Jan McGinnis and Mike Miller. Here at the table with me is our Board Secretary, Paulette Newbold, and our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Theron Schutte. A couple of housekeeping items. I don't think we have anybody here, but if somebody is here and wants to get public comment, we've got a sign-up sheet here at the speakers' table. You need to sign up. And when we get to public comment time, you'll have a chance to say what you want to say. Otherwise, would you all join me in reading the school district mission statement? "We develop learners who have the knowledge, skills, and positive mindset to successfully pursue a meaningful future through personalized learning experiences." And stand if you're able and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any changes to the agenda for the evening?
Yes, we have a couple addendums. 2.03, inter-agency agreements and contract addition. We have a quote from MechDyne for $8,216 in order to upgrade our presentation microphones so that we hopefully avoid some of the issues that we've had in the past. And then 4.07, Internet service provider E-Rate CAT 1 recommendation. We've had that on the agenda, but the contract just came to us late from MediaCom, so that's been added. And then we need to table 6.01, MHS replacement tower proposal. And we will not have a student school board rep report tonight.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second. Agüero, Miller, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries four to zero. Mr. Sodders.
Hello. It's odd being over on that side of the room again. Tonight for recognitions, we have Yessenia Alvarez Zamora. She is a sophomore at MHS, and she is a finalist in the Know Your Constitution program. So she worked really hard to earn that title, and she is with us virtually tonight. She's a virtual student. And it looks like we're going to give her a call here so that she can talk to us. But there's Yessenia. Can you hear us okay? Okay, perfect. Yep, yep.
I had the wrong number.
691, oh, okay.
Hello?
Hello. So, Yessenia, this is Adam. I have introduced you and just gave the board a little information about you being a finalist in the Know Your Constitution program. So can you tell them a little bit more about what that program is and sort of the accomplishment that you have?
Yep, thank you. Well, the Know Your Constitution competition consisted of a 50-problem quiz all about the Constitution, along with an essay that the students wrote, kind of stating their opinion on a certain law or politics. I think this year's theme was the felons and voting, like excrementing felons, whether or not they should be paying fines, and if they are paying fines, would that be unconstitutional? And, well, I believe this year there were 300 submissions, and only the top 60, I believe, were attending a Zoom meeting earlier today. And we have the judge of Iowa, I think her name was Lisa, along with a few other people that were there, kind of explaining to us what their goal was with the whole competition. They seemed to think it was very, um, their goal was to educate kind of the youth, kind of help the youth get more involved with laws today. Now, I personally don't plan on pursuing a law-based career. However, I still would kind of recommend it for other students, since it kind of helped me understand more about the world I'm kind of growing up into. It's very enticing, since it kind of pushes you to do your own research and be educated on issues about today, and have your own opinion based on the facts that you know.
How did you find out about the contest?
Oh, well, I'm a part of a group, Mrs. Fratell, at the high school host. It's called Youth for Awareness, and we kind of weekly discuss a few different issues. I believe the last one we discussed was kind of the new laws that are trying to be put into place, the impeachment, the riots. We just kind of, it's a group of students that has interest in discussing those types of issues, and Mrs. Fratell brought that up to me. And at first, I wasn't really sure if I was going to find the time to do it, but I'm glad I did, since it was a very educating experience.
And how did you prepare for it?
Well, as much as preparations go, I just kind of attended those meetings. And it did help me hear about more widespread issues in our country. As far as that, I tried to do my best to research online, and both with books and the library, trying to make my own opinion. I wanted it to be based on facts, I guess, using those basic research skills, you know, finding reliable sources and stuff like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Yessenia.
Yep, thank you, guys, for having me.
The next recognition is that of our own school board. This was kind of a long time coming because it's reflective of last year's, at least from November of 2019 to 2020, board development activities. We had six of the seven board members at the time, but Umtite was here most of that time, that qualified for the individual Better Boardsmanship Award, and those certificates, I believe, are being mailed to your homes and/or to our office, and then we'll disseminate. But we did receive the plaque. This is the third time in the last four years that the board has been, I think this year it was one of five boards from across the state that met the criteria for which this recognition takes place. So congratulations, and I think we're probably off to a good start for this year as well with most of the board members having attended the state convention or being registered for that, too. But essentially, it's a combination of formal as well as informal activities. So all of the subcommittees that you participate on count for a certain number of points. Board book studies count for a certain number of points. Anytime you attend either the conference or any workshop, there's points generally attached to that. When we bring the legislators in, which not everybody does, there's points attached to that. So, you know, we try to structure enough in-house things that, coupled with some external conferences or webinar experiences, hopefully put everybody in a pretty good position for that. So I want to commend the board for their dedication to their own development and helping us be as high-functioning a board superintendent team as possible. And we'll hand this over to Mr. Sodders or Mr. Gould. Actually, I'll give it to Mr. Goulding, because he'll make sure to get it hung on the wall. Normally, I'd shake everyone's hand, but with COVID, we'll just have to do the chicken wing thing.
Moving on to the consent agenda. Are there any changes or questions about the minutes from the February 1st board meeting? Anything of note in personnel?
No.
Inter-agency agreements and contracts. We've got an agreement with Vector Solutions for K-12 education software, diversity, ed U K-12 teachers, for training on diversity and inclusion for staff, in the amount of We have an amendment to the Computer Sciences Elementary Award Agreement, which was, what, a one-year extension of that. There's the quote Dr. Schutte referenced from MechDyne Corporation, in the amount of $8,216 for microphone upgrades for the boardroom. We've got two inter-agency agreements, one with BCLUW, one with Woodward Granger for special ed students, and then one general ed student agreement with Mason City. Questions about any of those items? Open enrollments for the 2021 school year, we have two in, three out, and for the next school year, four out. Paul Att, anything to note in bills or in the monthly financial report?
No, sir.
Are there any questions for Paul Att about bills or the monthly financial report? Are there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move for approval.
Second.
Miller, Agüero, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Motion carries four to zero. Anybody on there? Okay. We're on to item 401, the coronavirus pandemic response.
So our temporary supplemental policy related to COVID was initially presented to you either late summer or early fall. We've simply updated this document based on what the current guidelines or restrictions or lack of are. We make special reference to the action that the board took to offer locally the same FERC leave provisions that we had in place as a result of federal requirement through December 31st, and then the board had agreed to extend that to March 31st locally. Some of the adjustments, these adjustments were made by Dr. Ryan in HR and Stacy Tool Crawford, as far as any changes with the medical stuff from the Iowa Department of Public Health or the CDC. A lot of the travel restrictions, of course, are lifted now, so a lot of that was stricken out. But essentially, it was just to bring it up to speed, knowing that we're still, we still have some special provisions as a result of COVID, but much fewer restrictions than what we had before.
Questions for Dr. Schutte?
Move for approval.
Seconded.
Miller, McGinnis, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries four to zero. Dr. Schutte, you want to talk about the proposed resolution on Senate File 159?
Yes. The Urban Education Network has asked all of its member schools to consider having their boards approve a resolution showing their lack of support for Senate File 159, voucher education savings account, and expanded tax credit bill. So I will, maybe we could have someone read that resolution and then seek board approval of that.
I can read it.
Go ahead.
Whereas the Iowa Legislature is considering enacting SF 159, a scholarship fund for the purpose of enacting education savings accounts or vouchers, expanded open enrollment leading to segregation, expanded charter schools that can open in a school district without the locally elected school board's consent, and expanded tax credits. And whereas the Marshalltown Community School District Board of Directors has determined that the Iowa Legislature should not enact any type of legislation of any kind for any student, and should continue to promote and fully invest taxpayer resources in Iowa's public schools, who are barred by law from discriminating against any students and who are held to standards set forth by both federal and state government. Public schools are provided oversight by locally elected school boards and by the state of Iowa. Public schools must adhere to strict state testing requirements and ensure equitable access and outcomes for each learner regardless of income, race, religion, nationality, sexual orientation, or disability. Non-public schools are not held to the same public accountability standards. Iowa taxpayers deserve to know how their public funds are being used. School choice already exists in Iowa in the form of open enrollment, enrollment in private online institutions, tuition tax credits, and school tuition organization scholarships for families below 400% of the family of the federal poverty level. And whereas the Marshalltown Community School District Board of Directors believes that Iowa public schools provide a strong education experience for all students, the overwhelming majority of students attend public schools in Iowa, and families choose to remain in Iowa due to quality public school systems. We denounce any attempt to divert public funds from chronically underfunded, highly accountable public schools to private institutions that lack accountability and are not subject to rigorous academic scrutiny, including participation in and reporting of student performance on the Iowa tests, and are not provided public transparency or financial oversight by publicly elected school boards. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the board, passed and approved this 15th day of February 2021.
Move for approval.
Second.
Miller, Agüero, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Resolution is adopted four to zero.
And we will make sure that that signed resolution gets forwarded immediately to our three local legislators.
Dr. Stevenson.
You really can tell people are smiling, right?
Yes.
Hi, everybody. Yep, I'm smiling, too, because I was here at our January 19th board meeting telling you that we had submitted an application for a virtual academy school to open in Marshalltown for the 21-22 school year. And with your approval, we clicked submit on that on Thursday, January 21st, I think the date was, and then we were waiting. And then we got this letter back on February 4th, telling us that our application had been approved, and this will create a new attendance center of sorts, a virtual attendance center for us. But we're pretty excited, even though we have a lot of work to do on the backside, but to be able to continue to offer this learning-from-home option, not only to kids who live in Marshalltown, but kids who may live in other parts of Iowa and are excited about what we have to offer in Marshalltown, which could be the way we're presenting virtual education or dual language, possibly. We shall see.
So we're seeking board approval to move forward, to begin the process of announcing and announcing the program's availability, soliciting interest in participating, and approval to move forward with this program pending having adequate participation to do so.
Any comment or question?
Great job. How many of these virtual academies do we expect that the board, or that the state will approve?
It's really hard to tell at this point. There's less than a dozen right now in the state for people to pick from, and I would say of the ones that are out there, we're the most comprehensive, in that we go pre-K-12, and that we offer synchronous and asynchronous opportunities for students to learn. Also, at the secondary level, kids will have the option to be full-time or part-time. So this might be something that neighboring districts, for example, students might want to come back and stay in Marshalltown, because they could do full-time or part-time with us and participate in extracurriculars, too.
Yeah, I think this is great, and I think the materials that you guys have already put together to send out announcing this, I think those are, those are great, and this is, great job.
I like the marketing competitive differentiation of highlighting dual-language opportunities that we have that others may not, and so, super good.
Yep, and thank you to Eric Gosling, who's not here tonight, but he has kind of, you know, set the, set the stage for us in some ways at MLA for how to use Edmentum and how to use these virtual courses with his teachers, and we've been able to use that and modify it for our secondary students. And then we've, we've learned a lot this year about serving our pre-K6 students to what their families want and need, and being able to meet the requirements that the state continues to update for us in terms of what we must do, can do, should do. So I'm excited to get the word out there and see what our numbers look like so that we can start to post for our teachers who work for us, who may be interested in filling those positions for us for next year.
And I'm glad to hear that you're doing this synchronous and asynchronous, and I mean, so many of the options. It's just really an exciting time.
Yep. We have a motion to approve the Barstown Virtual Academy pending adequate necessary student-parent interest.
Seconded.
Agüero, McGinnis, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you.
Mr. Hesgry?
Thanks for the opportunity to present tonight. There's quite a lot to talk about on our conference realignment. So I'll say this discussion among the conference has probably been going on a long time. You know, I've been here two years, and it's been going on as long as I've been here, as far as realignment within the conference. So obviously, the CIML conference has changed quite a bit over the years. You know, even when I was in high school, and, you know, teams like Newton were in the CIML and Waukees wasn't, and now Waukees is to the point where they're having two high schools in the conference. So what started this conversation, I'd say, is equity. And, you know, it's obviously very challenging, because every school in our conference is so different. Every school's advantages, as well as disadvantages, are different. And among the suburban schools, you know, as we know, they're, they're getting much bigger by the day. Their facilities are getting better by the day. They're getting more kids enrolled within their school districts by the day, and it makes it extremely challenging for some schools to compete with them night in, night out. So we've been discussing as a conference to realign as a 10-9 split. So right now, as many of you know, I don't know if we can go to the other page. Right now, the, we're split up into three pods within the conference, the Central Conference, the Iowa Conference, and the Metro Conference. And within the Central Conference is, this year's Dowling, Johnston, Southeast Polk, Urbandale, Valley, and Waukees. And the Iowa Conference always consists of Fort Dodge, Marshalltown, and Mason City. Those three teams are always together. And then this year, it's Ankeny Centennial, Ankeny, as well as Ames. Last year, the Iowa Conference consisted of Marshalltown, Mason City, Fort Dodge, and West Des Moines Valley, Waukees, and Southeast Polk. So obviously, three teams flipped this year into the Iowa Conference. And then next year, with this current realignment, Waukees Northwest, the new Waukees school would be added into the Iowa Conference. The Metro Conference, which is the five Des Moines public schools, as well as Atama, that pod or that conference always stays the same. So if we kept this alignment, two years from now, it would be Mason City, Marshalltown, Fort Dodge, and then we would have Johnston, Dowling, and Urbandale into the Iowa Conference. So with the new proposal, we're looking at a 10-team conference, or 10-team division, as well as a 9-team division. So I want to reiterate, it'd still be the CIML conference, but the 10-team pod would consist of Ames, the five Des Moines public schools, Fort Dodge, Marshalltown, Mason City, as well as Atama. And again, what started that conversation was equity and competitive balance. And we feel that the 10-team proposal really gives our athletic programs a better chance. We can compete with those schools more often night in, night out. And it's not to say we still want to play teams in the other pod or the other conference. We would still compete against those teams in many sports and crossover games. So this proposal started probably last February at a meeting among the principals, as well as the ADs at Hy-Vee in West Des Moines. And since then, we've put in countless hours as a conference to look at the schedule for each sport and what it would look like in a 10-9 split. So as you can see up there, that's what it would look like in the 10-9 conference for each sport. So when we voted on it initially, a couple weeks ago, the ADs voted 14 to 4 in favor of the 10-9 proposal. And I'll backtrack a little bit. So the process consists of the ADs voting, and then the principals voting, and then it goes to the superintendent, as well as the board, to approve the next process. So when the ADs voted, it was 14 to 4 in favor of the 10-team conference, or 10-9 conference. And the schools voting no would have been Urbandale, West Des Moines Valley, Waukees, and Waukees Northwest. Those schools voted no. After that conversation, there probably, there became some momentum and some concerns with the basketball schedule specifically. And as you can see, it's the old proposal, or the one that we're currently in, we have 10 conference games and 11 crossover games. So basically, we already play everyone in the conference one time. I think the only school we didn't play this year in basketball was Des Moines East for some reason. But we were able to mutually agree and not play a few suburban schools such as Waukees. We both agreed not to play this year so we could keep teams like Newton and East Waterloo on our schedule. on our schedule for more competitive and closer games. So, the basketball schedule isn't really a huge change for us. It would provide 18 games, but we could still have three open games to go find teams where we can compete with. And I've talked to our coaches, have numerous conversations with all of our coaches, as well as our administrators who support this proposal. We've also sent out a survey that we developed as a conference to community members, parents, students, teachers, coaches. And I believe at least 88% of those people either agreed or strongly agreed with this 10-9 proposal. So, when it went to the principals, it was 13 to 5 in favor of the conference realignment. And this time, the five schools who voted against it were the Des Moines Public Schools. And again, those concerns came with the basketball schedule. You know, from their point of view, they're playing teams in the metro right now twice. And with the new proposal, they'd only play those teams once. So that's, that's their main concern right there. So with that being said, it was 13 to 5 in, in favor of it. And now it goes to the, the school board, as well as the superintendents, to, to vote on it. And this time, the CIML bylaws say that each school district gets one vote. So that would mean Des Moines Public gets one vote. The Ankeny and Ankeny Centennial, they'd get one vote. Waukees and Waukees Northwest would get one vote. And I don't think this proposal, again, it's not perfect for every school, but I do believe it's a step in the right direction for equity and for our teams to be able to compete better night in, night out. And, you know, as you can see with some of our school, some of our own programs, there's, and not just us, many other schools, there's, there's some mopsided scores night in, night out. Again, it makes it really hard to, hard to compete. So, since then, there has been, I'd say, some discussion of even those 10 schools completely breaking off and having their own conference. That's been discussed with, I know, some ADs, as well as principals and some superintendents. So with that being said, I'd probably open it up to questions, or Dr. Shute, if you wanted to elaborate on anything that I may have missed.
Yeah, I just follow up by saying tomorrow, I'm facilitating a meeting of the, I guess, six superintendents representing the 10 schools to talk about, to bring them up to speed, to make sure everybody's in the same place with what Ryan just shared. And then to look at what the options are. Any change that would take place would not take place till the 2022, 2023 school year. So, with that being said, if, if the districts decide to approve this modified conference realignment with the round robin basketball, which a number of the districts do not like, that wouldn't happen for two years. If, and if it were to happen, I think most of the schools in our conference would see it as a short-term fix to a longer-term resolution, which is to be on our own, to compete against our conference, pursue conference championships, schedule a few non-conference games with whoever we want, whether it's Newton, or Valley, or whoever. I don't think anyone's saying that they're not wanting to or willing to play many of those suburban schools. It's just not getting a steady dose of them, you know, playing them all, for example. So, I think there's, you know, I don't want to predict where things will head, but I think there's a high probability that many of the superintendents who would represent schools in our half of that conference, knowing that any change is going to take two years in order to implement, there, I'll be surprised if they don't recommend just splitting off and creating our own conference, kind of a Big Ten Conference. So, but we'll keep the board informed. We would have to notify the CIML Conference by the end of this year. If any school district that would have the intent of pulling out would need to notify them by the end of this year in order for that to happen in 2022, 2023.
Good job. Been talking about this, desiring this, and all the time I've been on the school board. Is there any way we can move faster?
Well, possibly.
I'd be curious to what comes out of the superintendent meeting tomorrow. It's something that, like I said, discussion, I'd say it's probably gained a little momentum to the last, just in the last few weeks. And I said, this has been a long, long discussion since last February, when this was initially proposed. And again, it's, like I said, I think it's a good step in the right direction.
I view this, this AB group thing as not perfect, but better than we have today. And I view what, Theron, what you had to say about our own, we'll call it Big Ten, as the best long-term solution. If there was a way to implement that in the 21, 22 school year, I think that, I think that, that would be the best solution of all.
Sure.
So, good job getting to this point. If we can move faster, we should.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think, you know, the, they, the conference schedules two years in advance, kind of in two-year cycles. And so I think that's why they require in their bylaws that you give them a year's notice, so that when the next cycle of schedules is, are developed, that they can accommodate any schools that are coming in or going out, so. But I'd agree with Mike, this discussion's been happening a long, 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 long time, and it's, different sides of the issue have proposed to do something differently, and nothing has happened. So I think it's about time that, that something happens.
Other questions, other comments for Mr. Isgrig?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Does he need a motion from us to?
Well, this was just informative, right? Yeah, just information.
At this point?
Yes.
Amy?
Hello. So, I am here to tell you about something that we've been working kind of in the background. As you know, last March threw us all for a loop, and my team especially, we worked pretty diligently to try to get internet access to kids throughout the district. It has gone pretty well, but it has been an expensive endeavor and one that I have really pondered on how we could make that sustainable. And it was difficult to even think of a way to make that sustainable. So, we started looking into grants and programs initiatives, and we found that Verizon had an initiative called Verizon Innovative Learning Schools. And if we were to apply, there'd be a small chance of us actually achieving the, getting accepted into the program. But if we did, we would get free hotspots. It's 30 gigs a month, and then after that, it switches to the 3G, which is very similar to what we currently have. So it'd be free hotspots to kids who qualify for free and reduced lunch, which in our district is about 75%. And the schools particularly that they are willing to give these hotspots to, which is middle and high school. So that is for us, Lenahan Middle School and High School. So we said, let's go ahead and apply. So, Julie Thede and myself, along with the building principals, put together an application. And in January, we heard pending a few things that we had been accepted into the program. So, I'm here tonight to ask you to sign the memorandum of understanding that will get us about, well, a little over 2,000 hotspots for free for 6th to 12th grade students who qualify for free and reduced lunch. That is about $82,000 in value a month. So we're pretty excited about that. It'll also help us stop spending some that we have been. And just a few fun facts, there were only 30 districts nationwide that were chosen for this cohort. That's actually more than they had in the past, but due to the nature of what's going on, they have tried to invest more. There were six districts chosen in our central region, and we're only one of two in the state that were chosen. So I'm really proud of everyone who was on the interview team. They're listed in the bottom. I'm not sure if you can read them, but it's Julie Thede, myself, Jackie Wyatt, Dave Glenn, Kristen Cal, Dave Young, Dave Stanfield, Jen O'Neil, Sue Unhelder. Bruce Lawrence was also involved in that, and he did an excellent job representing Lenahan.
That's two years of that?
There's two and a half years, actually. So we'll get them, as soon as the memorandum of agreement, our understanding is signed, we'll, they'll be shipped to us. And this also includes free access for our teachers to earn micro-credentials through a really well-vetted and accredited micro-credential program on tech integration, basically, 21st century skills, computer science, things that align really well with what we're already doing.
This is like a $2.5 million grant, essentially, right? $82,000 a month times 30 months, is that right?
They call it a program or an initiative. Yeah, it'll be.
That's huge. $2.5 million program.
I was smiling when I said that. If, if we get over 2,000 students to say, so part of it is that they have to tell us that they don't have internet. So, we may or may not have that many, but that's how many could be awarded a hotspot.
Good job.
Wow. This is impressive.
Sure, it was extremely competitive, and I think it just speaks volumes of you and the committee that put forth the necessary effort to be selected. So congratulations, good work.
Thank you. I think the way that this community is deserving really helped with, with our selection as well.
Great job.
We have a motion to approve the memorandum of, of understanding with Digital Promise Global to participate in the Verizon Innovative Learning Solutions Initiative.
So moved.
Second.
McGinnis, Aguirre, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries four to zero.
Okay, the next one's mine, too, so I have to jump up. Okay, so this one is for, a couple board meetings ago, I asked that I could go out, if I could go out for RFP to look into a possible new internet service provider or keeping our current internet service provider. So we received, you'll see the four bids that we received, and MediaCom, our current provider, actually won out. We decided that it would be a good idea to increase our bandwidth. We're only currently using about 40 or 50% of our bandwidth, which is five gigs. However, we haven't had our full amount of students on site, and we're, so we're anticipating, especially with kind of some of the change in practices and the PD work that we've been doing, that we will increase bandwidth just in how we're changing instruction and utilizing some of the technology in different ways. And then, just some of the new things we're looking at that I'll share with you in the future, just takes a little more bandwidth. So, we just really want to future-proof this. So this is for three years at eight gigs. And this would be 90% covered by E-Rate.
Move for approval.
Seconded.
Miller, McGinnis, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you.
Or over to you.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
We're on, we're on the saved stuff part.
Okay. So the next four agenda items pertain to the sale of $10 million in sales tax revenue bonds that was approved by the board on February 1st. These are all legal documents that we've obtained from our attorneys and our, Matt from Piper that is helping us with this sale. So the first one is just approval of the resolution appointing the paying agent, registrar, transfer agent, and approving the paying agent, bond registrar, and transfer agent agreement, authorizing the execution of the same.
Any questions for Paulette? If not, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Miller, Aguirre, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries four to zero.
Next item is to approve the tax exemption certificate.
Any questions?
Move for approval.
Second.
Miller, Aguirre, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries four to zero.
Third one is to approve the wire transfer agreement for that money to come into our account.
So moved.
Second.
McGinnis, Aguirre, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries four to zero.
Third one is to approve the wire transfer agreement for that money to come into our account.
So moved.
Second.
McGinnis, Aguirre, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries four to zero.
And the last one.
Looks to me like it's the same as the first one.
Looks like it was taken from the first one.
Right.
Okay.
Never done that.
The last one should be the resolution for the issuance and providing for and securing the payment of the bonds. All of these were part of the attachment on the first agenda item, that 501.
Right.
So this is just the fourth motion in that document.
Move for approval.
Seconded.
Miller, McGinnis, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries four to zero.
And then 5.05 is just requesting your approval to set up a new capital projects fund in our accounting system so that we can deposit the proceeds of this sale in there and track those projects accordingly.
So moved.
Second.
Aguirre, McGinnis, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries four to zero.
The tower proposal is tabled, so we're up to the air conditioning projects.
Second.
Agüero, McGinnis, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries four to zero. The tower proposal is tabled, so we're up to the air conditioning projects.
I don't have a two and a half million dollar program for you, but we have good news. We've reviewed this. You see that, uh, we received, uh, bids on the two projects at Marshalltown High School and Anson Elementary School on February 3rd. We did receive four bids on the high school and three on the Anson projects. The bids came in very well, and we had multiple alternates, as you know, and Bee's not here, but she's probably seen that we didn't have an alternate for the windows at Anson School. And it's our recommendation to make the award, um, to Garland Construction. They provided a combined bid, uh, to do both the projects for $4,300,000 is the base bid. And we're recommending that you award four of the alternates. Alternate one is an LED lighting conversion for the spaces where we're doing air conditioning at the high school. So it's only those spaces, not other spaces. That's a $325,000 add alternate. Alternate 2A is a dehumidification HVAC rooftop piece of equipment and associated components for $465,000. Alternate three is to replace flooring in 16 of the classrooms at the high school. We picked the 16 worst. Some of your classrooms have four different kinds of flooring in them, from patches, from days gone by, and we picked some of those that have asbestos tile and mastic holding them down. So Mr. Golding is working on some asbestos abatement that'll happen at the, right at the end of the school year, so that can be accomplished before this work is done. That's a $33,000 add. And then, of course, Anson School alternate one, it was the only alternate there, uh, to replace those windows for, uh, $130,000. Uh, all in all, those, total of those numbers is $5,253,000, and we had budgeted significantly more than that, um, 7.8 million. So it's, it's a substantial savings of, what, about 2.3, 2.4, 2.5, quite a bit. So when we first got those, we wanted to confirm that everything is included. Uh, we spent quite a bit of time making sure that everything is in the bid, uh, there's nothing missed on the design. It's really the high school project where we found the savings. The bids came in very, very close on the Anson School. We kind of summarized how we, how we saved those dollars in our recommendation letter. We, we actually redesigned the HVAC, the air conditioning system twice, so we developed three different designs, and one of those included a total rerouting of the piping and coring of the waffle slab, the concrete slab between the floors of the building. Um, and so several large components. One of the components that we found we didn't have to do by code after we had started the design a little ways, uh, was to update the fire alarm system at the high school. That was over $300,000 that we had included in the budget, uh, $352,000, which is a really good savings. We also found that by redoing the routing a few times, we kept making it more and more efficient with fewer penetrations and fewer ceiling implications. That saved about $350,000. The HVAC equipment itself, um, we found that we, if we sized it appropriately, we wouldn't have to redo the entire electrical distribution. We could use the same circuiting, which saved about half a million dollars, uh, and so on down the line. So we continue to work on refining the design until we get the bid out, so we've, we essentially redesigned it from scratch twice. And of course, the design contingencies and the general construction markup amount to almost $2 million of that savings. So we are well under budget, and we would recommend award of that. We also want to note that, along with that, because we didn't have to complete the, uh, the full fire alarm system design, redesign of that area at the high school, we're offering a fee credit for the work that we didn't have to do for that. Uh, that's about $19,000, and a couple fee credits on the window alternate and the LED lighting alternate, uh, because we based our contract with you on a percent. So we just looked at the low bids, and they, this contractor was the low on pretty much every bid, um, across the board, as you can see, which is a really good thing, except for the alternate that we didn't award, we're not recommending for award. Um, and that's replacement of the ceiling and the lighting, uh, in the pool, along with some decorative, um, elements with that ceiling to dress it up. We think that can be done at a later time, and a big portion of that cost is, is scaffolding in the pool, to build a floor of the pool, and then scaffolding inside the pool room itself. So we don't think that's a good investment, a good, uh, place to spend your dollars. So, really good news, all around. Any questions?
I like, uh, I like that I see some local company names being used as subcontractors, so.
Yep.
That's, that's good. I see the electrical subcontractor that every single one of them used was the same one, which I find interesting. Any, any reason for that?
Um, my guess is they really wanted the job, and they gave the low, their low number to everybody, and, uh, nobody beat them out. It's very common for us to see the same sub with a lot of the bidders, because if they're going to give the lowest number, they usually give the same number, the same generals, unless they might have had a bad experience with one of the contractors, and they might give them a little higher number, for example. But usually, everybody's trying to win the project, and they want to give their best price. We're pretty happy with the work that Garland has done on the tennis complex. We wished it got done a little faster, but with all the challenges with, with the aftermath of the duratio, really, with some of the components, and then with COVID, they had a little bit of a schedule delay, but overall, we're happy with the quality of the work that's been done.
This is good. I remember when this project was a $14 million deal or something, now it's like two.
Just for the high school.
Just the, right, just the high school. It was $14 million.
Yeah.
And it's two.
I seem to recall you were going to buy me a steak dinner, Mike?
You bet.
Someday.
Yep.
Someday. Yeah, we're very happy with this. The contractor understands the timeline. You'll see that we gave the contractors the opportunity to express a different timeline. The substantial completion in the bid was, uh, August 1st, but the final completion, they extended it two weeks from, from August 15th to September 1st, and we're okay with that. Uh, substantial means it's mostly going to be done, um, and by the time the students get there, they'll be able to, you know, finish up a few things even, even after the school day. The schedule looks good, too.
Other questions? If not, may I have a motion to award Garland Construction both the Marshalltown High School air conditioning project and the Anson Elementary School air conditioning and renovation projects for a combined base bid of $4,300,000 plus four additional alternates for a total contract amount of $5,253,000.
So moved.
Second. Agüero, Miller, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion, all opposed, say no. Motion carries four to zero.
Okay, thank you. The next item is the actual construction contract between Garland and the district. We've had our attorney review that contract, and they've given their approval.
Move to call a question.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Miller, Agüero, all, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Motion carries four to zero.
All right, and coming in regards to the three Lennox units, um, these are supposed to be owner-provided, contractor-installed, part of the construction at the high school as well as Anson. And to make the timeline just for the builds of these units, I'd kind of like to get the approval to move forward, to go ahead and get them ordered. Um, the three units total, there's two for the high school and the one for Anson, and that comes out to 16, like, almost 29,000 for that.
I think it's great you're using, um, Lennox. Do you know if these units, this is just out of curiosity, will they be built here in Marshalltown?
I believe so, from what we was getting. I know the one unit that goes next door is a totally custom-built, so that we can almost do a direct swap of what's there now, so, yep.
I think it's great.
Yeah, we engaged Lennox very early on to try to make sure that, um, we wanted to spec their project or their product and have them be involved to the extent possible, and this was the extent that they deemed made sense for what we were doing.
Do you need a motion for approval?
Sure.
So moved.
Seconded.
Miller, McGinnis, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries four to zero. Thank you, Todd. We're on to policies.
All right, um, we have not made any changes or adjustments to the policies that are part of the first reading that, um, we're asking that you approve. The first two, I would recommend the board, uh, move for adoption and waive, uh, second reading, that would be the new exhibit 403.3E1 hepatitis B vaccine information and record. That was something that we recognized we didn't have in place that we needed. And the second one, there was a new adoption, was exhibit 507.2E1 authorization asthma or airway constricting disease medication or epinephrine auto-injector self-administration consent form. That is a mouthful.
It is. Um, questions for Dr. Schutte on either of those two? If not, is there a motion to adopt, um, 403.3E1 and 507.2E1 and waive the second reading?
So moved.
Seconded.
Agüero, McGinnis, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. They are adopted.
The other policies that you saw at the last meeting were all amended policies, matching up with IASB and/or with our current practice, so 501.4 entrance requirements as it relates to evidence of age, 502.8 search and seizure, 502.8E, which is now the new 502.8E1 search and seizure checklist, 603.1 basic instruction program, 604.6 instruction at a post-secondary education institution, and 605.4R, which is now the new 505.5 graduation requirements. All of those were amended. I would recommend approving the amendment and waiving the second reading. Uh, questions for Dr. Schutte about any of those, uh, policies? If not, is there a motion to amend 501.4, 502.8, uh, 502.8E, new 502.81, 603.1, 604.6, and 605.4R, and waive the second reading?
Move for approval.
Second.
Miller, Agüero, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries four to zero.
Nico, have?
Yes. We're reviewing, looks like we are reviewing, revising to make sure that we are aligned, um, with the IASB, so changing the number of the policy here from 301.2 to 302.2. You can see the revisions that were made there, uh, just making sure we're aligned there. We did X-out a bit at the bottom, talking about, uh, contract being renewed. There's just some ver, different verbiage there that has us aligned.
Yeah, it, it's alignment with IASB, but Iowa Code more so than anything.
Questions about that one for Nico?
That would come back.
Yep, that one's got to come back.
302.2 associates to the superintendent qualifications, this is a very short, local, locally-created policy. We're looking to change the numbering to 301.1. Uh, I would recommend that we mark that as reviewed.
You may have a problem with that one?
And then we have another new exhibit, parental authorization and release form for the administration of medication to students. Uh, this was modeled after IASB. This policy would come back for a first reading.
Any questions about that one? Okay.
Well done, Sean. Well done today.
Adam, do you have any, uh, communication information to share?
I do. So, um, with your, your approval of the Marshalltown Virtual Academy this evening, I am excited to start the marketing campaign for that effective tonight. I will be having a, uh, initial push here this evening, and then, uh, we will have an ad running in the newspaper here just as soon as possible. I'm working with the advertising department on that. And otherwise, we will, uh, also, I'm also continuing to work with, on the education audit for Phase One. Uh, that involves, of course, gathering up documents for our main contact, Evelyn McCormick. Um, she will be taking a look at everything from our strategic plan to, uh, all of the great newsletters that our principals and, and different staff members, uh, share with fellow staff members and with parents, um, as well as data from social media accounts and just all kinds of fun stuff. So, um, I'm continuing to share that with her. It's an ongoing process, as is, uh, forming the, uh, focus groups themselves that we will be asking questions of this spring, um, in order to gain feedback, so. That's where we stand at the moment. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Uh, not a question, just a, a comment. I see commercials online for like Iowa Connections Academy and other online virtual schools. Do we have, have you thought about any of that sort of stuff beyond just like a newspaper ad?
I am certainly open to doing, to adding that to our ad campaign for this program. Right now, the big push we're doing is to get open enrollment, um, open enrollments in, because that is the, that is a very close deadline, just by happenstance of how this whole process has worked so far, but yes, that, that's definitely something I, I am open to looking into and adding to our.
Yeah, and maybe that's a down-the-line kind of thing. We're just trying to get moving here first, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, reminders, we've got a benefits advisory committee meeting this week, Wednesday, uh, that's Zoom meeting, right, Paulette?
Correct.
Okay. That's me, Mike, and Bee. I assume she's watching, so she'll remember to, to zoom in for that. The SIAC committee meeting is coming up, as is a LOU committee meeting in May. Bee has the initial review of policies for our March 1st meeting. I'm not sure there was any committees that met since our last meeting, so we shouldn't have any.
We're not.
Committee reports. Anything, anybody? Anything anybody would like to have considered for a future agenda? Not? Would anybody like to comment on any of the things that we did tonight for kids? There's a lot to pick from.
There really is, between the Verizon non-grant.
Initiative.
Initiative, and the virtual schooling, and there's just a lot here.
Yeah, it was a, it was a good meeting.
Air conditioning in the high school's been a long time coming.
Fixing the windows at Anson.
Okay. I think let's take a five-minute break, and then we'll come back and we'll do our closed session. Is that fair?
Awesome.
Okay. Thanks.